Good evening and welcome to the City of Pasco Council Regular Meeting, Monday, March 3rd, 2025. The city thanks you for being a part of your city government. At meetings, city council takes formal action on items, holds public hearings, and conducts other business of the city. Agenda packets for those present are available on the table immediately as you enter your right under that sign that says agendas. For those following along, they're available online at www.pasco-wa.gov/agenda. This meeting is televised live on PSC TV, Channel 191, on Spectrum Cable, in both Pasco and in Richland. It's also streamed on the city's Facebook page, website, YouTube channel, and on Microsoft Teams webinar. This previous council meeting video is available on the city's website. Lastly, the public may submit comments or ask questions by contacting the city manager, the city clerk, or by using the Ask Pasco app. With that, Ms. Clerk.
Yes. Council members Barajas.
Present.
Blaisdell.
Present.
Grim.
Here.
Harpster.
Present.
Peralas.
Here.
Mayor Protem Milney.
Present.
And Mayor Serrano.
I am here.
Thank you.
Oh, if you'll all please join with me, stand, join with me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you. With that, that moves us on to item number four, which is our consent agenda. All items listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by a roll call vote as one motion as listed in the packet. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If further discussion is desired by council members, the item may be removed from the consent agenda to the regular agenda and considered separately. So with that, before I get rolling, does anyone from council have a desire to move these? Seeing none. Item 4A is approval of meeting minutes from February 18th, 11th, from February 18th, 11th, and 20th, 24th of 2025. They've got item B, which is bills and communications approving claims on the total amount of $6,687,837.82. Item C is resolution number 4571, the 2025 to 2029 Tri-City's Home Consortium Consolidated Plan and 2025 Annual Action Plan. Finally, item D is resolution number 4572, approve a five-year professional services agreement with Vera Mobility for red light safety cameras. Mr. Milney.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the consent agenda as read.
Second.
I got a motion by Mr. Milney, a second by Ms. Blaisdell, Ms. Clerk.
All right. We're going to mix it up tonight. We'll start off with council member Grim.
Yes.
Council member Harpster.
Yes.
Council member Peralas.
Yes.
Council member Barajas.
Yes.
Council member Blaisdell.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Milney.
Yes.
And Mayor Serrano.
Yes.
It passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. That moves us along to item number five, which is proclamations and acknowledgements. None are listed. That moves us on to item number six, which is public comments. The public may address council on any item unless it relates to a scheduled public hearing. This item is provided to allow the opportunity to bring items to the attention of city council or to express an opinion on an issue. Its purpose is not to provide a venue for debate or for the posing of questions with the expectation of an immediate response. Some questions require consideration by council over time and after deliberative process with input from a number of different sources. Some questions are best directed to staff members who have access to specific information. Citizen comments will be limited to three minutes, as you see by the timer here by myself. Those with lengthy messages are invited to summarize their comments or submit written information for consideration by council outside of formal meetings. Lastly, when you're called upon, please provide your name and your city or county of residence while speaking, before speaking into the microphone. So with that, do we have any public comment here? Go ahead, Ms. Mahoney. Uh, I doubt it. I can't see them. It looks like it's on. I see a red light.
It's on now?
I believe so. Yeah, it appears to be on now.
It's red.
Mary Mahoney, Pasco resident, to Pasco via RCW 42.56. Provide permits and fines for killing our eight floodplain American bald eagles. Provide a 404 permit from the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers regarding floodplain development. See Riverview East Sewer System. Provide a start date for the Road 48 Park Concept. See public comments at the Pasco City Council meetings. Ike Meyer- Roundy on 52322 and Mr. George Docstatter, 2325. Provide totals for the Pasco Aquatic Center and total paid out for ex-Pasco Mayor Matt Watkins. Total for the WOW Factor, or also called the Wave Machine. Costs vary from $20 million to $280 million. The CIP budget for Pasco is over a half a billion dollars. CIP budget for low barrier shelter for people, provide that. Provide how much of that CIP budget is going toward a low-cost spay neuter clinic at Tri-City Animal Services. Total paid out to Pasco and/or Tri-City Animal Services from WSU for providing research dogs and cats to WSU. See former Animal Control Director Angela Zeiler's quote in the Tri-City Herald, quote, "The dogs euthanized at WSU were ones the shelter would have had to kill anyhow," end quote. Provide the rehire date for Angela Zeiler at Tri-City Animal Services. For details, call Pasco City Attorney Lee Kerr at 509-735-1542 for Angela Zeiler's position, salary, and duties. Provide Zeiler-Ziegans reeducation and certification for humane euthanasia methods as required by the Animal Welfare Act. See past animal control botched euthanasias termed popcorning the dogs and cats, or a violent painful death. Provide the deleted Pasco City Council meeting on 4/1/19 with Lee Kerr's comments regarding the WSU contract, Angela Zeiler's missing rainy day fund, Mr. Kerr's approval of due process violations at Animal Control, and more. Provide results for 48 counts of animal cruelty and the donation theft of $375,000 in the missing rainy day fund. See Chambers, Howard, Hernandez, and Angela Zeiler, respectively. Provide an animal research provider permit and an insurance policy. Call WSU President and Dr. Guy Palmer, 509-335-4200, for a list of animal control facilities and rescue groups who also provide research dogs and cats to WSU. Include Washington, Oregon, and Idaho. Dr. Guy Palmer's number is 509-432-3385. This is for the record and putting Pasco on notice.
Thank you, ma'am. Do we have any additional public comment? Going once, going twice, third call. Seeing none, we'll move on to item number seven, which is reports from committees or officers. This is opportunity for council members to provide reports. Mr. Grim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Last Friday it was. I joined the Mayor Protem, and I'll probably just let him talk about that, but it's really fun being a part of those ceremonies. But this morning, I was at the state Capitol dropping off two of my kids for the PAGE program, where they'll work for the state legislature for this week, learning about the process in PAGE school for two hours a day. I'm grateful for Representative Barnard sponsoring them. Today was the first day of voting, though, on the House and Senate floor, so of course, being there, I couldn't resist the opportunity to connect with Ms. Murray, our state lobbyist, or lobbyist for the city, and wait in the halls of the capitals for opportunities to to thank and encourage our legislative delegation, and of course, briefly remind them of our important asks for the city, like overpasses and public safety. So, yeah, I'm there at the Capitol. I mean, you should know me by now. I'm going to take the opportunity to advocate on behalf of Pasco. So anyways, yep, just just got back this afternoon from Olympia and just wishing our legislators and senators well this session. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grim. Mr. Milney.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, on Friday, we went to Station 82, which is right at Pasco Airport, and got to push in the, well, there's three new fire trucks. We got to push in, this was my second opportunity to push one in, and I had Councilman Grim with all his kids, so we were able to do the work and push it in. And the whole tradition dates back to like the 1890s, when they would have a wagon, they'd unhitch the horses, and they would push it back in the fire station. So it's kind of honoring tradition and then just honoring the women and men that serve our community and do such a fine job. So I got to give the speech, and it was really good to push the fire truck and thank everybody for all their hard work and keeping our city safe. So, yeah, I was glad that I was able to attend. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and Mr. Peralas.
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to note that I attended the Development Infrastructure Fee Meeting with other developers and staff last Thursday. It was a great discussion and really great feedback on our proposed changes, and I think we'll be able to find a good resolution here in the coming weeks with that. Also, just want to say congratulations to the Chihuahua Girls Basketball Team. They won this past Saturday, and we're qualified for a bye, and they're going to be looking to face someone who wins this week in the quarterfinals at the WIA State Tournament. So congrats to them.
Thank you for being our local sports reporter, Mr. Peralas. It's always, I'd say that, I mean, it's somewhat sounds in jest, but I mean that sincerely. You know, I'm a strong advocate that we need to advocate for our kids, and I appreciate you having the ability to follow that and recognize the youth of our community who are doing great things. So again, seriously, I appreciate that. As for me, I think the only thing I did, which was, you know, outside of the standard, you know, official capacity, I attended Chief Gears' wife's memorial. For those who didn't, aren't following, Chief Gear was our last fire chief, and his wife passed just a couple weeks ago. And, you know, she was an asset to obviously his family and to our community. So, you know, if you're bored enough that you're watching this, Chief Gear, our prayers and our thoughts are still with you and your family. So with that, we'll move on to item, I don't see any other lights. I did, we'll move on to item number eight, which is hearings and council action on ordinances and resolutions relating thereto. We do have a public hearing listed. That's item A. It's Local Improvement District Number 152 Final Assessment Role and Ordinance Number 4762. Local Improvement District Number 152 Final Assessment Role. I see a couple folks coming from the audience to present. It does say Director Sarah and Mr. Harpster, your light's on because?
Yeah, I'm going to recuse myself on this item.
Thank you, sir. You want the presentation, Mr. Ferguson, then we open the public hearing? Is that the preference of order?
So I'll defer to staff, but I think the way the order goes, it goes Ms. Sarah, and then it goes Mr. DeGiulio, and then some other folks. We swear them in, but I guess my question would be, do we want to start with the script first? Because that would walk us through.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking when I was asking you. Let's go and do the script. Then we'll do whatever the order is you just said.
Go ahead.
Uh, I apologize. The script is...
Give me a copy.
Yeah, can I get a copy?
Sure.
Thanks. All right. Good evening. I'll now call the order of the hearing on the final assessment role for the City of Pasco, LID 152. I'm Pete Serrano, the mayor of the City of Pasco, and I will preside at the hearing with city council president. Assisting the city council is the city attorney, Eric Ferguson. The LID is represented by special counsel Steve DeGiulio and Bob Sterbank of Foster Garvey. Because this is a quasi-judicial hearing, Mr. DeGiulio and Mr. Sterbank are screened from the city council on this matter and will not be advising the council regarding the assessment role. Let's see, am I going all the way through this, mister?
Correct.
The whole pack? All right, here we go. Sorry, you may want to sit maybe a while. The purpose of this meeting is to hear any protests of the final assessment role of LID 152. Council make a final, the council will make a final determination of the assessment role and will confirm its decision by ordinance. The only issues before the council are, one, whether this sewer project will generate special benefits to the properties within the LID boundary, and if so, whether the amount of the special benefits to each property exceeds the amount of the assessment, and two, whether the assessments are proportionate. The process, we will use the following process. The city clerk will read the list of those property owners who have filed a written protest with the city. Only those property owners who have filed a written protest will be allowed to participate. If you have not filed a written protest, you must file a written protest in order to participate. All persons who wish to give testimony will then be asked to take an oath to be administered, excuse me, to be administered by the city clerk?
City attorney.
City attorney. All right, by the city attorney. Then, city staff will present testimony in support of the final assessment role. Any property owner wishing to cross-examine staff must wait until his or her protest is considered. After staff has presented its testimony, we will take the protests in the order received. When your name is called, please come forward and present your testimony or evidence. If you want to ask staff questions, that is the time to do so. After a property owner has presented all testimony and exhibits, the city staff may have questions for the witnesses. We will then proceed to the next property owner who has filled a written protest and repeat that process. If particular evidence has been established during a prior property owner's challenge, it is not necessary for you to repeat this evidence in your case. The council will consider all the evidence presented when it considers each individual protest. After all property owners who have filed a written protest have presented evidence, the city staff may elect to present additional testimony or exhibits in rebuttal. Property owners will have a chance to ask questions about that additional evidence from the city witnesses. The city may choose not to present any additional testimony or exhibits. After the city has presented any rebuttal evidence, no further testimony or exhibits will be accepted. Each protester will then be given a short time to make final arguments. The city will be given an equal amount of time to respond. The council will then deliberate and announce any preliminary, any preliminary ruling. The council's written decision will be in the form of an ordinance. We've got some additional reminders here. Any exhibits that you want to give the committee to consider must be numbered. Please give the exhibit to the clerk who will number the exhibit. The city clerk must keep all exhibits until all appeals have been exhausted. When testifying, if you refer to an exhibit, please refer to the exhibit number. The members of the council are sitting as a board of equalization in this matter. We may not discuss with anyone unless during the official hearing. Please do not try to contact us for any reasons, as we'll have to politely decline. If you have any questions or have a need to communicate with us, other than during the official hearing, please contact the city clerk. The city, the city clerk will now read the list of property owners who have filed written protests.
There are no, no protests have been filed, sir.
Okay. At, is this the present time? Okay. At 7:18 PM, I will ask the clerk to notify us if anyone else has filed a written protest.
So, sorry, I gave you the wrong information there. So essentially, a few minutes from now, you may want to re-ask, because people could file a written request.
Is that prior to anyone presents?
I would do it at the very end of.
At the very, very end?
Yeah.
The 7:30? Yeah, you're not on, Mr. DeGiulio. There you go.
City will call for further protests to make sure that everybody's given an opportunity to do so, and then probably close the period. But we'll do that after we make our initial presentation.
Okay. Is that, is that okay, Mr. Ferguson? Okay, so I'll lay that at your feet, Mr. DeGiulio. Thank you, sir. So scratch that, you know, Mr. DeGiulio will be asking for further protests when he closes his statements. At that time, as you just heard, property owners who have not filed a written protest will be precluded from challenging the assessment as shown on the final assessment role. Just a couple of things about appearance, appearance of fairness. We've already had Mr. Harpster recuse himself. At this time, I would ask any of the other members of councils if they wish to disclose any matter that involves any appearance, appearance of fairness. Seeing none. At this time, I would ask anyone, ask whether anyone who has filed a written protest, which sounds like there's none, who wishes a challenge of participation of, anyone who wishes a challenge of participation of any council member on the basis of appearance of fairness doctrine. So if you have a basis to disqualify any of us, please advise. Now's your chance. Seeing none, I think we, are we going back to Ms. Sarah or direct to Mr. DeGiulio? Mr. DeGiulio, this floor is yours.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, as the mayor's introduced me, I'm Steve DeGiulio. I've been working with the City of Pasco for many years on local improvement district projects. In light of the apparent lack of protest type, we will try to abbreviate our presentation, but we do want to make the record clear. Local improvement districts, our Supreme Court tells us, are of ancient lineage. They are a method by which the public, the City of Pasco, facilitates the development of necessary public infrastructure to support private development. Instead of putting on private development, the obligation to incur substantial upfront capital costs for building public infrastructure, the city takes that on in terms of managing and financing the initial costs and then spreading those costs over the properties that are specially benefited by those improvements to the properties within the special benefit area. Rather than spreading the cost over the entire city, where the particular project is for a neighborhood or an area, the local improvement district addresses that. And the city has used local improvement districts for infrastructure improvements in many parts of its community. This evening, we'll have two principal witnesses, Ryan Withers from RH2, the project manager, who'll describe most of the project, and then MAI Appraiser Evan Rains is swell. Both of them will be sworn in presenting their testimony if necessary. The city will also call the Finance Director, Darcy Buckley, and Brandon Lane, who is the staff person on the project. There we go. Very briefly, the city will knows this area, the northeast area for, it was annexed a few years ago after some litigation, and the sewer project then followed to support the demand for development. You will hear about the construction schedule from Mr. Rains, how it was bid publicly over four different phases, and the process for that. The city council created the LID by adoption of its ordinance 4592, and the preliminary assessment role in the amount of $21,494,000. You'll hear more about, but also the final assessment role and all of the final assessments are lower than were estimated at the time of formation of the local improvement district. So that's a preliminary heads up on where we're going tonight. At this time, then, I'll call the city's first witness, and that is Ryan Withers. Mr. Withers?
Mr. DeGiulio, did you want me to swear in all, sorry, Mr. DeGiulio, did you want me to swear in all the witnesses at the same time? Okay, great. So raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Good, great.
Mr. Withers, will you introduce yourself to the city council and provide your name, job, title, and address?
Yes, Ryan Withers, project manager with RH2 Engineering in Richland, Washington. And please tell the council about your professional qualifications. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of Washington.
Just one second. I think we're going to procure a mic for Mr. DeGiulio. That way the folks at home can follow along. I apologize.
Again, Mr. Withers, your professional qualifications?
Sure, I'm a professional engineer in the state of Washington. I've been licensed in the state since 2012, and I've been working with RH2 Engineering for, this is year 17.
And how about your educational background leading to this profession?
I graduated from Washington State University in 2007 with a BS of civil engineering.
And what is your connection to city's LID number 152?
I served as the primary engineering consultant for everything prior to LID formation in terms of pre-design, as well as all of the design, signing and stamping, all of the design documents, as well as overseeing the construction management.
Thank you. And have you worked on other city LIDs in the past?
Yes.
Which one, what?
LID 151.
Okay. Which one was that?
That was the Northwest Sewer LID.
Okay. Well, now we're talking about Northwest or Northeast Sewer LID, and looking at the exhibit, slide three that's up on the screen, can you briefly describe the project?
Sure. So the project serves the properties shaded in in green, which equate to just over 1,000 acres in the northern and eastern portion of the city's UGA. In order to provide wastewater service to these properties, approximately 5.3 miles of gravity sewer main was installed, a lift station with a firm capacity of 3 million gallons per day, and approximately two and a half miles of force main were installed in order to construct the improvements shown here.
Thank you. And briefly review the construction schedule?
Sure. So sort of working from top down, the pre-formation and pre-design work began in the early phases of 2022. The LID was formed in May of 2022, at which point, design began in earnest. The design consisted of four phases. They were shown on the previous map, and they were broken into those phases for both design and construction purposes. All four of those phases were designed in concert with each other throughout much of 2022. And at the end of 2022, in November, phases one and two were publicly bid. The following month in December, phase three was publicly bid, and then the following spring in April, phase four was publicly bid. Construction for all of those phases proceeded, again, more or less in concert throughout all of 2023 and into 2024, at which point, all of the projects were completed, and the final acceptance dates for each phase are listed at the bottom of the table.
Thank you, Mr. Withers. I'm going to skip ahead, and council's aware, takes notice of its adoption of ordinance 4592. But did you work on developing the preliminary assessment role for notifying property owners regarding the potential formation of the LID?
Yes.
Okay. And how was that formulated, looking at this slide number six?
Sure. So starting at the top, the $21.4 million was based off of planning level unit costs that we had developed for some previous projects for the city. Those specifically included the city's general sewer plan, as well as a separate technical memorandum, more specific to this east LID area. Those unit costs were brought forward based on some sewer alignments that were discussed with the landowners in early 2022, and based off of that alignment, the $21.494 million assessment was, or estimate, was calculated. And then, specific to the assessments for each property owner, what you see here is an estimate of the flow that each property owner will contribute into the the set of improvements, as well as the acreage for each property. And that acreage is straight from the Franklin County Assessors website. And ultimately, the the assessment charge, the preliminary assessment charge was based on a 60% flow, 40% area split for each of the property owners.
Mr. Withers, just so the council's not clear on this, the list of properties on this exhibit is different from the list of properties that we're going to see on the final assessment role. Is that correct?
Yes.
And why is that?
Property owners, some property owners changed between LID formation in May of 22 and present day.
Thank you. All right, let's go to the final assessment role that's being presented to the city council. And what does this exhibit show, sir?
So this exhibit shows, again, starting at the top, the the actual LID project cost number of 20.6 cost number of 20.65 million dollars and change. The difference between this number and the 21.4 million dollar number shown on the previous slide is that this number includes the actual construction and design and permitting and financing costs for the LID, whereas the previous slide was based off of the estimated cost back in 2022. And then, the acreage for these properties, again, pulled straight from the Franklin County Assessor's website, and the flows have some changes as well, based on different development plans that some of these landowners have now compared to May of 2022.
And Mr. Withers, were all of the property owners given an opportunity to identify the particular flows that they were seeking in their development?
Yes.
And did some developers choose to reduce their flow request?
Yes.
And were those adopted by the city in this proposed final assessment role?
Yes. As, as a result of those, of some properties having a reduced flow, you see at the bottom of this table, there is a city oversized contribution line item, and that line captures the remaining capacity that these LID improvements can serve, but are not being allocated to any of the landowners in the main portion of the table.
Mr. Withers, in your opinion and experience, is this two-brunged approach, the area and flow separation, ratable in proportion for all of the properties within the LID?
Yes.
And why was this method used rather than zone and termini, or just square footage or other bases for assessment?
Sure. So this, I guess in the simplest terms, this method was used because it was discussed multiple times with landowners and their representatives in early 2022, and there were no dissenting comments received at that time, so we moved forward with it. Specific to zone and termini, you know, i- in this case, we have a, a range of land uses being served within these properties, some residential, some not. And specific to the non-residential properties, those properties are more prone to have, you know, large unsued buildings, warehouses, shops, or large parking lots that you wouldn't see so much in a residential area. And since those areas may not be needed to be served in their entirety, the zone and termini approach is, is generally not seen as being as equitable as, as something more akin to this.
And do these assessments, in your opinion, more fairly reflect the special benefits to the properties within the LID?
I believe so, yes.
Any questions from the council at this point?
I believe none, sir.
Okay. We'll, we may call Mr. Withers back, but at this point, I'll turn it over to my colleague.
Thank you, Steve. Good evening, council. My name is Bob Sturbank. I'm a colleague of Mr. DeJulio's at Foster Garvey at this point. I'd like to ask Evan Rains to come to the stand, please. Mr. Rains has been previously sworn. Could you please introduce yourself to the council?
My name is Evan Rains.
And provide your name, job title, and address, please, Mr. Rains.
Mr. Rains, you shut your mic off if you can. Thank you, you're on.
Thank you. Evan Rains, I'm managing director for Colliers International Evaluation and Advisory Services in Las Vegas.
And could you provide your address, please, for the clerk in the record?
6795 Agilysys Way, A-G-I-L-Y-S-Y-S, Way Suite 210, Las Vegas, Nevada.
Thank you, Mr. Rains. Could you please tell the council about your professional qualifications?
I've been appraising since 1992 when I started as an intern. I became licensed in 1994. I've appraised since then. In 2011, I became designated with the, with an MAI designation from the Appraisal Institute. I got the ASA from American Society of Appraisers, got that designation shortly after, and then designated with the International Right-Away Association.
Thank you. Do you participate on any boards of equalization?
I also sit on the Board of Equalization in Clark County, Nevada.
All right, thank you. And, and does that board undertake evaluation considerations similar to what the council is doing this evening as a board?
Every year, the board meets after taxes have been assessed, and people have a chance to protest, and we consider protests and help adjudicate, resolve.
Thank you. Could you tell the council briefly about your educational background, please?
I have undergraduate degree from Portland State University and an MBA degree from University of Nevada, Las Vegas.
All right, thank you. Did you prepare an appraisal of real property situated in LID number 152 that's at issue this evening?
I did.
Did you prepare a report documenting your appraisal analysis and conclusions?
Prepared a report, roughly 450 pages. The first roughly 34 pages is a summary of the project, and then each individual property we also valued.
All right, thank you. And is that appraisal report contained as exhibit G in the staff agenda report this evening?
Yes, it is.
And for council following along, or anyone at home, that begins at page 42 of your agenda staff report on this item. Could you please describe what the appraisal report covers? Or, I'm sorry, I'm going to jump ahead, because I think you may have already done that. What does the report conclude concerning fair market value of the properties?
Well, first, the report in general concludes what the overall benefits are for the LID. That beyond, in the letter of transmittal on the first two pages, and then with the first 34 pages of the, of the report.
All right. And does the report also address fair market values for the 17 different individual parcels within the LID?
The report looks at the 17 individual parcels. It looks at, we analyze the property in, without an LID, and then we look at the property as if it has an LID, two scenarios. And then we look at the difference in value, and that difference is the benefit to that property.
And is the, the table that summarizes those valuations what's shown on the screen here as slide nine in the council packet?
Yes, on slide nine, you can see each parcel in, in each row. You can see the as-is value, which is before the LID. Then you can see the as-is value with the LID. That difference in the final column to the right is the special benefit value. And if you go down to the bottom, you can add them up. It equates to 24,890,000 dollars.
And is that 24 million the total special benefit, special benefit value for all of the properties within the LID?
Yes, it is.
All right. And I think you mentioned something about appraisals for individual parcels. Where are those found in the appraisal report?
So they're found in the addenda. So after you get past roughly page 34, we go through each property. It's about each property, we spend about 22 pages. We look at the property. We, we, I did a site visit to each property, looked at the size, the location, access, various physical attributes of the property, and that's noted in the, in the addenda.
All right. And so, in your professional opinion, does this, the difference in the fair market values that are shown in the appraisal special benefit column there on slide nine, does that demonstrate the special benefit to the individual parcels attributable to the LID 152 sanitary sewer improvements?
Yes, that's the value of the property with the special, with the LID minus the value of the property without the LID. That difference is a special benefit.
All right, thank you. Does the council have any questions for Mr. Rains?
I, I do have a question, and this goes back to the very beginning. You gave a list of your certifications and on page, let me go back to my notes, on page 485, in the packet that we received, there's a, an image of the Washington State appraisal license. However, that date shows expired February 3 of 2024. The accolades that you mentioned before, all your other certifications, does that include a current certification to perform these appraisals in the state of Washington?
I am currently licensed in the state of Washington. That, and I have, I was licensed at that time. I still am licensed. That was an old license in the addenda.
Yeah, so it's an old, it's, it's an old image attached to the current packet.
Correct.
Okay. If, if we can just get that.
We can supplement the record.
Thank you.
Madam Councilmember.
Thank you.
Any further questions, the council? Seeing none, Mr. Sturbank.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll turn it back to Mr. DeJulio.
Thank you. Appreciate it, Mr. Rains. We're calling Ryan Withers very briefly. Mr. Withers, you previously testified about the final assessment role. Do any of the final assessments, as listed in the final assessment role, exceed the special benefits attributable to the specific properties as just described by Mr. Rains?
No.
Thank you. All right, members of the council, you've, in the city's LID history, you've seen this exhibit similarly. It describes the process going forward. Following the city council's adoption of the final assessment rule ordinance, there is a 10-day appeal period for challenging any of the special assessments. And also, then, the city will publish the notice in the newspapers and mailed out to all the property owners of the final assessment, and that's giving notice of the opportunity to prepay all of the assessments, all are part of the assessments within that 30-day period. For financing purposes, that sets the amount that the city then has to bond, to take out the interim or construction lending that was used to finance the construction of all the projects. So they have, the city has to decide how much it's going to have to finance, who's going to pay, who's not going to pay. And then, at the expiration of the 30-day period, which currently is estimated to be April 22, 2025, then the city will proceed to do the calculations, go to the market with the LID bonds, and then likely the first payment will not be due until sometime a year from now in March or April of 2026, after the first notice of collection goes out. So that is the schedule that is traditional with an LID going forward. At this time, it is now 7:43, and be an opportunity for a further call for any protests in writing to be presented by any property owner within the LID.
Do we have any further protests? Seeing none, Mr. DeJulio?
Hearing none, Your Honor. At this time, Mr. Mayor, the city rests.
Thank you. With that, with no protests, Mr. Ferguson, does that then roll us into discussion and then potential action?
That's correct.
Yeah. So, any council members have any questions or comments on this? Mr. Prowlus?
Thank, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I just want to say thank you for the presentation. I had quite a few questions, but they're answered over the weekend from staff, and your presentation has made it more crystal clear for me, and, and I was very happy to see on there that there's development happening about probably 85% of the parcels. So, good work, and I'll be voting yes on this.
Thank you. Mr. Ferguson, your lights still on?
Yeah, the only question I would have, and I apologize, because I'm not able to read numbers, but I just want to clarify that the number in the ordinance appears to be 14,945 and 65 cents. I just want to make sure that when we're looking at exhibit B, the numbers are, is the, the row we're dealing with hybrid flow in charge, not the adjusted assessment? So maybe we could just clarify for everybody what that distinction is? That was, yeah, right there. Right there.
You're, you're off again, Mr. DeJulio. Thank you.
Mr. Ferguson is asking a question that follows from this spreadsheet. You'll see the final assessment role numbers are shown under the column entitled Hybrid Charge 60% and Flow Area 40%, and that totals 14,949,945 dollars and 65 cents. That is the special benefit against each of, excuse, excuse me, the assessment against each of the benefited properties. The next column shows an adjustment. Effectively, those properties have already paid a portion of their assessment, but the assessment is the 14,9, not the 13,8.
Great, thank you. Thank you, gentlemen.
Well, we'll go to collection is, at least in the first 30 days, is the 13,8 number, but the assessment is 14,9.
Thank you, Mr. DeJulio. Do we have any other questions or comments from council? Seeing none, I think Mr. Milne.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm moved to adopt ordinance number 4762, approving and confirming the assessments and final assessment role of local improvement districts number 152 for the construction of new sanitary sewer, gravity mains, a lift station, force mains, and other sewer improvements in the city's east urban growth area, as provided by ordinance number 4592, and levying and assessing a part of the cost and expense thereof against the several par- parcels of land as shown in the final assessment role and further authorized publication by summary only.
I'll second that. Got a motion by Mr. Milne, a second by Mr. Prowlus. Let's go ahead and do a roll call on this one, Ms. Clerk.
Council, Councilmember Prowlus?
Yes.
Brahas?
Yes.
Blaisdell?
Yes.
Grim?
Yes.
Milne?
Yes.
And Serrano?
Yes.
It passes unanimously.
With Mr. Harpster refused. Thank you. Yeah, go ahead and get Mr. Harpster, and I guess I need to close this, right? Or do we leave this one?
Yeah, it's not, it's not similar to other types of hearings we have to.
Okay, just gavel in, don't have to gavel out?
Thank you.
Okay, well, then with that, we will move on to item number 9A. So, item number nine is ordinances and resolutions not relating to hearings. Item A is ordinance number 4763, approving the use of park development funds for memorial pool bubble, memorial pool bubble cover and improvements project. Mr. Rice?
I'm going to start this out by saying, let's get on to the fun after that hearing. So, Mr. Harpster, you didn't miss much. So, anyway, good evening, Mayor and council. Move on to my slides here. We'll get through them. So, this is the first of two reports I'm presenting tonight regarding projects enhancing our current city recreation facilities. Both projects are on tight timeline for completion due to either scheduled facility usage or fund expenditure, thus presenting them on our regular council meeting. So, next slide, one more. So, this report's on the memorial pool bubble cover dome project. I use that interchangeably, and is, which is awaiting, which was awaiting completion of our engineering design of the pool deck and the construction bid process to determine the actual total project cost. As a quick refresher, the memorial pool dome project involves updating the memorial pool fac- to determine the actual total project cost. Um, as a quick refresher, the Memorial Pool Dome Project involves updating the Memorial Pool Facility to be functional year-round and expand the competitive swim team opportunities in the community as well as traditional and other aquatic uses. The project has multiple phases or tasks, with the first being, uh, council approval last year to purchase the actual pool dome cover, which is currently, uh, undergoing fabrication. Um, the next phase is the foundation and pool deck construction, which will support the installation of the pool dome. Additionally, the purchase of a pool bulkhead divider and existing pool house requires upgrades, including insulation, a new roof, heating and cooling systems for year-round functionality, so. See where I'm at here, if I'm ready for this. Thank you. All right, so, with the completion of the bid process for the pool, uh, pool foundation and deck, total project cost estimates are to be finalized. At this time, remaining project costs will exceed the two thousand and twenty-five CIP budget by three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. To make up for the shortfall, staff is requesting council approval of an ordinance to expend community park development funds, uh, which currently total four hundred and eighty thousand. Uh, this allows the project to proceed with planned completion for use by this fall. Uh, if the ordinance is approved, Public Works will prepare a council report and resolution for approving the award bid for the foundation and pool deck project next. I guess with that, any questions?
Do we have any questions from council? Mr. Milne.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I, it's not really a question, it's a comment that, uh, before I got on council, it was on the park board and talked about this then, and so it's cool to see, you know, seven years, seven, eight years later, it finally come to fruition and sometimes things do take a long time, but uh, it's glad to see it now coming and I think it's, uh, it'll come in, uh, be used for an East Pasco and I'm glad to see it, uh, finally here, so thank you. Thank you for hard work on that.
Thank you, Mr. Milne. Um, I'll, I'll echo that. Obviously, I wasn't on the park, Parks Board, but I recall, you know, talking about this long, long ago. And quite frankly, I saw this and was like, man, is that still not done? Um, but obviously, that's not the case. Mr. Rice, uh, the shortfall, does, does, part of that have to do with inflation, or is it just simply we budgeted differently?
Um, combination of things, yes. Some inflations, um, 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 time in manufacturing as well, due to the expensive amount of time to get there. And additionally, the i- i- initial pool foundation was expecting to, uh, which was gonna hold the bubble down from blowing away, we have winds. Um, there is realization that our current pool deck actually slopes the wrong way for correct drainage, so that the drainage should actually fall against the outside dome walls versus inside of the drains, so thus requiring replacement of not, or installation of not only a foundation, but the pool deck. Uh, I think the good news in that is that we've had some sinkage in some of the current pool deck and we've also had to remove a panel for repair, so this is kind of a timely replacement that would come along with the facility anyway. So those, I think, yeah, explain some of that enhanced cost.
Excellent. And then one last question. Uh, that last bullet point about, um, you know, ASAP to avoid any impacts of the Mace Wind Team. Do we anticipate that this will actually, you know, we, we approve this tonight and this actually gets moving and we're completed by the beginning of, of May?
Yeah, that's the anticipated plan and I believe Director Sarah will speak a little bit more, but I believe the project has forty construction days built into it. So that's about eight work weeks, which should get us right around that first week of May. Um, some of that's con- concrete curing time, which I'll let her speak to as well, so if, if weather holds and there's no, uh, unknown issues determined, then yes, it looks like we'll be able to have regularly scheduled planning start in May, which starts with our, uh, swim team practice.
Well, excellent, thank you. I, I don't think we need to get in that fine level of detail. I just wanna make sure because I know, uh, swim team has always been, you know, we're going to Richland, we're going elsewhere. It's great to have facility here in Pasco and not still be waiting on, you know, the water park to open its face too, which is wherever it is down the road, so, thank you for that. Uh, Miss, any further, Ms. Prowls?
Thank you. Um, no question, just a comment, basically saying thank you for keeping this project uh, ahead of schedule, I think. Um, for everyone watching that's been asking about the dome, it's coming. It's finally coming. Thank you again.
I appreciate that. And also, I should recognize our recreation manager, Brent Cabalac, who's uh, waiting out here for any questions. He's done a, a, a large amount of work, including well before I started this position, so it wouldn't be possible that him working with those teams or working through this thing, so thank you for recognizing that.
Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Cabalac. Uh, seeing no further lights, Mr. Milne.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to adopt ordinance number four-seven-six-three amending the two thousand and twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-six annual capital projects budget, approving expenditure of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, uh, park development funds to cover the resultant budgetary defis- deficiency for the Memorial Pool Bubble Cover and Improvements Project.
Uh, got a motion by Mr. Milne, a second by Ms. Brahas. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Hearing none, that passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I do also wanna just say to everyone who participated in the, the hearing, you know, some folks already left. I failed to do so bef- when they were still in the room, but, uh, appreciate all the hours and time that went into the preparation. I mean, just, just the amount of time that it took me to read the script alone was, you know, quite painstaking, so I can imagine the real work was quite difficult, so thank you all. Uh, with that, we'll move on to item B, which is resolution number four-five-seven-three. Uh, just kidding, that's what I just did. See, this is why I shouldn't go out of script. Um, item C, resolution number four-five-seven, what? Oh, yeah, okay, so yeah, we are on B, so I should stay in script. Yeah, resolution number four-five-seven-three bid award for Memorial Pool Bubble Cover New Construction Construction Project. Ms. Sarah.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. This item is specific to the bid award for this project and it follows the presentation from Director Rice, speaking about the funding for the project. So, we are seeing in the screen the location of the memorial pool. Next slide, please. Uh, this is the work that has been bid out, uh, competitively for the reconstruction of the deck and creation of the foundation that is adequate to support the bubble and hold it when there is wind. Next slide, please. And this is just the side view, so you can have an idea of what we're building, which is really the foundation and deck. The pool will be installed, um, once the temperatures change, so that when it's needed for extending the season. Next slide, please. Um, the funding, um, it is at one point two five zero, so one million and a quarter. And that is what is, uh, budgeted for this project. Next slide. And finally, the bid, um, was, as I mentioned, bid competitively. We received three bids. The lowest, uh, responsible responsive bid was, uh, in the total amount of seven hundred and fifty-seven thousand, nine hundred and forty-four dollars that is including sales tax. And it is, the bidder is ESF Development. Um, this is lower than the engineer's estimate, but just a little bit. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
We have, Ms. Blaisdale.
I just have one question. Is this gonna be a year-round dome? So even during the summertime?
No, it'll come down. Um, it, it's meant for operation from about October to March or April. It takes about a month to put uptake down, do maintenance, so it'll be about eleven months a year that the pool be usable between the four summer months and the months that the dome's in place.
Gotcha. Thank you.
We have any additional questions or comments, council? Seeing none, Mr. Milne.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I move to approve resolution number four-five-seven-three awarding bid number two-three-four-seven-nine for the Memorial Pool Bubble Cover New Construction Project to ESF Development LLC of Walla Walla, Washington, and further authorize the interim city manager to execute the contract documents allowing for all necessary budget adjustments.
Second.
Uh, I think Ms. Blaisdale got that one. Give it to her. Uh, motion by Mr. Milne, a second by Ms. Blaisdale. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Hearing none, passes unanimously. Thank you. We'll move on to item C. I'll get this one right the first time. Resolution number four-five-seven-four purchase agreement with Musco Sports Lighting LLC for purchase and installation of Burton Boulevard Soccer Complex Field Lighting. Back to you, Mr. Rice.
Uh, thank you. Uh, good evening again, Mayor and Council. Uh, second of the two reports I'm presenting tonight regarding projects to enhance, uh, current city recreation facilities. Um, I'll go right to you. Here we go. Uh, so, uh, this report is actual purchasing field lighting for the Burton Soccer Complex, um, which started with a two thousand and twenty-two city council request for a one point one million dollar state legislative allocation to make Phase One field improvements at the soccer complex. Uh, that request resulted in a two thousand and twenty-three award of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Uh, staff initially evaluated installation of a single championship turf field as outlined in the CIP Burton Boulevard Soccer Complex Improvement Phase One, however, found that the initial cost, annual maintenance and ten- to twelve-year replacement cycle were cost prohibitive. Uh, staff also received feedback from soccer community that a single turf field would not help the demand for more field usage, so. See where I'm at here. Try to line use myself. All right, very good, so. Um, instead, staff shifted to Phase Two comp- uh, Phase Two Soccer Complex improvements, which included field lighting and soccer community, uh, in which the soccer community emphasized higher impact, providing additional field use time over a single turf field. Um, and as you see, we kinda outlined some of the costs of that, uh, that turf field. Uh, initial cost was one point nine, nine million dollars with, uh, annual, annual maintenance of forty thousand dollars, so it is pretty cost prohibitive. And then with an additional replacement every ten to twelve years, which you've seen at both our high school stadiums, uh, we just didn't feel we could carry that on at our current budget, uh, cycle, so. Uh, so instead, I'm requesting approval of a resolution authorizing the city manager to purchase LED lighting and infrastructure for five soccer fields for a total cost of one point eight million. Um, again, similar cost to the, uh, soccer turf, however, twenty-year planned life cycle for these and limited maintenance and no replacement costs. So while the costs were similar, this will, uh, definitely make the funds go further with less ongoing support, so. Uh, our current budget includes seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars estate allocation and a million fifty thousand from LTGO bonds to cover that project, so. Um, state funds are expected or must be expensed by June two thousand and twenty-five, and then we're also competing with installation uh, with other Musco projects, including out at Geese Stadium, so this is another reason that we're bringing this to you in our regular council meetings for, uh, for quick approval so that we can move forward. Um, so again, I requesting approval of the purchase resolution prepared for tonight. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Do we have any questions or comments from council? Seeing none, Mr. Milne.
Right, thank you, Mayor. I move to approve resolution number four-five-seven-four authorizing the interim city manager to execute a purchase agreement with Musco Sports Light Lighting LLC for the purchase and installation of five fields of sports field lighting at the Burton Boulevard Soccer Complex.
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Milne, a second by Ms. Blaisdale. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Hearing none, that passes unanimously. That moves us on to item number ten, which is unfinished business. Irrigation, utility, revenue, requirements and connection charges. Ms. Sarah.
Mayor, Mayor, if I could, a couple of introductory comments.
Yeah, sure.
So, uh, good evening, Mayor, Council. So, uh, you actually have had considerable information on this item. Uh, most recently, you were workshop last week and certainly prior to that with the rate, uh, valuation and those things, so. Last weekend, or excuse me, last, uh, workshop last week, I, I thought there was a very good discussion among council. Uh, a lot of good information, a lot of good back and forth, and I think out of that, we felt we got a pretty good consensus. Certainly, council didn't take a vote. We had a pretty good sys- consensus of what you wanted to see tonight, so we're not gonna go back into a whole lot of detail and background. We're gonna just kinda get to where we left off last week. Uh, Director Sarah has a very brief presentation that's gonna get you quickly to a few policy, uh, options. And, uh, we look forward to council's direction on those, so with that.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and council members. Uh, just to recap, what we have discussed in prior meetings was the utility overview, or was the capital improvement plan associated with it? The operations and maintenance needs for that utility to continue to operate and provide the level of service our customers expect. The development of the rate model and how that remodel is utilized. A rate comparison with neighboring utilities that provide irrigation services. Uh, maximum connection fee calculated, the rate increase proposal, the alternatives of rate increase proposed. And then finally, the outreach and feedback received throughout our outreach process. And that is a recap of all the things we have discussed in the last several months. With that, uh, this image shows in shaded light purple the area that is served with irrigation or that is planned to be served with irrigation utility. It is a subset of the city. Um, the city as a whole has overlaps with other districts that provide irrigation, so the irrigation utility for City of Pasco really only extends uh, in that limited area on the western northern portion of the city. Okay. Now, onto the policy alternatives or options related to both connection fee and rates. And again, just a reminder, the, the revenue needs are calculated in our rate model, the connection fee and the rate help each other reach or meet that need. So as the connection fee decreases in the options, you will note that the rate increases. So that is how, uh, the burden is shifted between connection fee or uh, rate throughout the whole rate payer basis. So the three alternatives that were, um, developed based on the, uh, feedback we received last week, or direction, better explain. Uh, option A would be the maximum calculated connection fee at one thousand four hundred and eighty-eight dollars and then increases in the first three years of seventeen percent, followed by three years of three percent increase. Option B reduces that connection fee to one thousand dollars per, um, residential unit that connects. And then that rate in the first three years is seventeen point seventy-five percent. And the following three years will be three percent. And option C is reducing the connection fee to about half of where was the maximum calculated, that is seven hundred and fifty dollars with the connect, with the rates being eighteen and a half percent on the first three years, followed by three years of three percent. And the dollar amounts annually are shown in the table for your comparison. With that, I'm happy to answer questions on this item.
Um, go ahead, Mr. Prowl.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, um, I found some, something really interesting today. I was looking at that map. I found out that where I live, I'm not even serviced by the city, off Road Forty-four. So that's, but I really couldn't tell that by the map, because it seemed like it was purple everywhere. Um, so that was something I found out today, but a couple of questions. Uh, did we ever find out if we could perhaps have waivers for people on fixed incomes, senior citizens?
So, yep, the, so far, it looks like that's gonna be the case. Uh, the way that the statute is drafted for, uh, how the definition for utilities, it doesn't mention, uh, irrigation specifically. Uh, it mentions, uh, specifically utilities. We consider the way our, uh, obviously the way our, um, irrigation system is, uh, built, uh, even though there is, I think there's a, a lag in the winter, we don't build. I forget how we build. Seven out of twelve months, so, uh, but I think, uh, it would fit the definition, so yeah, we, we're, it's looking good, but I won't, uh, won't say for certain yet, but it is trending that way. It looks like we would be able to, uh, do that as a, uh, discount for senior and low income.
I appreciate that. Um, my other comment I had was, you know, I, I read the packet and I've reached out to, uh, individuals and developers and really just common residents who are gonna be impacted by this. Um, just really, there's no other way to skin this, uh, skin this cat, I guess. I, I try to look at the moderate and then the seven fifty perhaps connection fee, uh, but either way, we're gonna have to ask. We're gonna have to find that money somewhere else. And I would hate to have existing customers have to pay for the growth of the city or, uh, uh, for other areas of the city where, that is seeing growth, so. Um, for me, I'm gonna have to, at this point, uh, I, I'd be voting for the connection fee of one thousand four hundred and ninety-eight dollars. And then along with the seventeen percent increases, um, for the next couple of years and three percent after that. I really just don't see another alternative, um, based on the data and information that, uh, staff has provided us. Um, so I guess in essence, growth is gonna have to pay for growth and we'll have to deal with that, but I, I will note that there is a lot of changes happening in the development, uh, our fee structure, but one thing we do know is that those single-family school impact fees are gonna go away, so there's a little bit of savings there, um, at the moment, so that's where my head's at and, uh, I'll look forward to seeing this here soon and hopefully we can, um, thread the needle on the waivers for our senior citizens and anyone on fixed incomes and I think it's a win-win. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Prowl. Mr. Harpster.
Uh, just two comments. One, I love the style of the presentation of cut to the chase and not rehashing everything we went over just a week ago. Um, so a big fan of that. The, uh, I, I thought option B was the best option presented in that it doesn't put the burden on either new development or existing infrastructure, but kind of shares, uh, that load. And I think that's important because, one, it's not just growth that's causing the need for upgrades and system improvements, but also the existing users. And so, um, I'd be in favor of option B, um, again, because that, I think- And so I'm, I'd be in favor of option B, um again, because that I think is the best scenario for uh both sets of users and then also is. The most middle ground where, of course, you know, nobody likes fees, but uh they are necessary when running a city and. Um it seems the fairest to me to try to uh meet our residents in the middle, and I think option B does that, so.
Thank you, Mr. Harbster, Mr. Grim.
Um thank you, Mr. Mayor, you know, I guess I first wanted to speak to a public comment we received last week. Um Kennewick was listed as the highest cost of irrigated water in the area. And a member of the public erroneously stated that we are three times less the household income here in Pasco compared with Benton County, Richland and Kennewick. So they can, uh quote, so they can afford what they are paying because their wages are much higher there, and I I think we can all sympathize with this member of the public. Using an exaggerated number as an idiom, because we all do those things to make a point, but I looked into the numbers. Um to see how far the discrepancy was, and I must admit, I was surprised by the fact, the truth of the matter is not only. The example we use, Kennewick isn't three times more than the household income in Pasco, it's actually less than Pasco. The most current numbers available, according to US Census Bureau, actually have Kennewick's household income in twenty twenty-three more than Pasco, ten percent more. Um they are at seven, two, eight, six, seven, and Pasco is at eighty-one thousand, one hundred and thirty for a household income. Wanting to test this further, I looked at um looked at it from the other way at the poverty level standpoint. And even the poverty level, according to Pasco and the Census Bureau, was less than that of Kennewick, twelve, six to thirteen, nine. Mr. Mayor, this was a good exercise for me as it serves as a reminder of the quandary that we are all in. Uh there was a time where we were the smallest city of the three, but no more. Um in the same way, there was a time where we had the lowest household income of the three, but no more. Some of us have lived here our whole life, while some of us have moved here for, at the very least, of the many reasons that makes. This such a great place to live, including our low cost of living, but the probably, the populations exploded in the last twenty years. Which means a need for utility infrastructure, transportation network, and of course, police and fire, you know, as a steward of our city's resources. Our cities will alw- our citizens will always look to us to tighten our belts first as a city, and I think. That always needs to be our default, and at least in my mind, my ideology is taxes should be the very last. However, in the middle, I think we do have to look at what people pay for services with the city. Not only what does it cost us to provide those services, but where are we compared to others, and so I think this is a good exercise. For us because we we need infrastructure, we, our citizens tell us they want more police on the streets. We need to fix the congestion in West Pasco, so something has to give somewhere, and I think looking at some of these fees. Uh and just the cost of doing business with Pasco is worth looking at that. All that to say, I I, Mr. Mayor, I think growth has to pay for growth and like council member Prowles. I would be for option A, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grim, uh saying no further lights, the one question I have is we projected to twenty thirty, do we know what our needs are? Uh are we gonna have a heavy lift in thirty-one, thirty-five, do we have any projections? Uh because what I don't wanna do, and obviously, we don't have to do this tonight or in the interim. Uh have a real steep increase of fifty-one to, you know, fifty-seven, whatever that C adds up to percent. Back off at three percent, and then all of a sudden in thirty-one, and and of course, I won't be here, I mean, I'll I'll be alive and I'll live in Pasco, but I won't be on council. In twenty thirty-one, I don't want the council to be, quite frankly, what we did as the prior council and I'll own this. We didn't wanna raise a lot of fees, so we deferred them, and now we're sitting on a decision. Some of us are still on the dais and we're having to eat what we didn't do earlier, so what I don't want is the next council to be shelved with it. Or at least let's give them the heads up that in twenty thirty-one, you're gonna be making some hard decisions.
I I think a couple of things, and I'll ask Director Sarah to to jump in, but first of all, don't be too hard on the past council, because you didn't. They didn't have the information you have, a lot of the work that was done to build the case for this rate increase, we. Didn't know about what what the you, for most of the time, previous council was uh in office, the UGA wasn't expanded. Yeah, we did not know at that point in time whether or not those thousands of acres, couple thousand acres up there were gonna be included in the uh. In the irrigation system, because uh if they were gonna go in at half acre or larger lots, it wouldn't have made a whole lot of sense probably to. Extend the irrigation system up there, so there's a lot of things that have happened since, including the CIP study and the evaluation of the system. Itself, a lot of that work uh council has done, or not coun- city's done over the last few years, you know. And um and uh a big majority of it you have in this plan. That's going to be funded by the rates that are proposed and before you tonight, so with that, Maria, I don't know if there's any big capital things on the horizon.
There are no big capital things on the horizon, but but the reality is that that may change as the comprehensive plan for the city occurs. And there is areas of expansion uh where there may be need for new infrastructure to be able to support that expansion. Or it could be that our existing system that we're starting to see failures and needs for replacement. May reach that critical point where there is a lot more replacement to be done, and that is only predictable as we start seeing the failures. We know it's a system we acquired and we have transformed into our irrigation system. And likely, it was all installed in a certain period of time, and once we reach that life cycle of that material. We'll likely start seeing a lot of failures and determining what is that capital plan needs to be to address this without having to. Basically rely on emergency response as um pipes start bursting and roads start getting washed away.
And the and the big unknown out there is regulatory impacts, you you don't know five, ten, fifteen years out. What a withdrawal from Columbia River, which is a good chunk of our uh source of supply for this utility. How that might be impacted earlier, I'll leave you with one other little piece that has nothing to do with the irrigation system, it has to do with roads, is it. All the roads on that south slope north of uh from the airport, basically all the way to road hundred. Were built at the same time, and they're all gonna time out at about the same time, so. Infrastructure is always gonna be an issue, no matter if you're talking about irrigation, streets, water sewer treatment, all those things, so.
I I I appreciate that uh information that helps me with my accurate but partially so- short-sighted comment there. But uh I guess to the extent that we're look, you're looking for direction, I I'm, I don't know if I'm A or B. There's no sense in C, I mean, uh doesn't make sense to me, so I I'm certainly leaning towards A. Um so, I mean, you certainly have three who have voiced support or at least some form of support for A and. And even if I move towards B, you'd have two and two, so you have some support towards at least targeting the higher numbers, Mr. Prowls.
Uh thank you, Mayor, just wanted to make another quick comment, um city manager Zabel, you mentioned studies and stuff like that, and. I just, I just kinda wanted to know, in those studies, do we ever um consider water conservation, you know, zero escaping? Kinda in those studies, and perhaps so in the future, we gravitate towards doing something like that. Just because, again, I I think I've, myself and other people in the council have beat on this trend a lot, a lot, is we just. Maybe we just don't need to use water and have grass, I think we need to start pushing and influencing. Policy and developments to go that route, like you just said, some areas might be tapped out eventually, we may have to be limiting our intake from the Columbia River. So by us not being more proactive about it, I just feel like we're setting ourselves up for a bigger issue and 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 I was doing some research over the weekend. Um and I saw that Spokane is a very good uh zero escaping program where people can transform their lawns and save money and get a credit. I mean, I think those are things we should be looking into, I don't really care what my neighbor's lawn looks like, I really don't. If he's, you know, being a good steward of the environment, awesome, you know, I should do the the same thing, I got a pond in my front yard, so maybe, maybe I need to stop. Uh with the water amount of water I use, but I just think we need to start being more proactive in regards to this, and and I did like a mini poll, I'm not gonna say it's. It's, you know, such scientifically significant, but a lot of people on next door like the idea of doing some type of zero, zero escaping program here in Pasco, so. I think the the want is there, it's just a matter of us, you know, directing city staff to start developing policies, and I think there's. There's examples out there like the city of Spokane, so I just wanna put that out there, I just think we're talking about water and talking about increasing fees, and like a lot of people. Maybe people on fixed incomes don't wanna do that, not, you know, not irrigate their lawns anymore and then venture into zero escaping, so it's just a dot, thank you.
Yeah, so. Yeah, I I would say that, I mean, that that is definitely a consideration, that's something the city needs to evaluate in in future. Uh study of this utility and and with our potable water uh utility as well, because the majority of our city is is. Irrigated, at least the residential irrigation with potable water. Uh you still have to build the pipes to deliver it, you still have to pump the water, there there's still a lot of the same cost. Cause you're still having to irrigate plants and things like that, you know, zero scape is, it's not just all pure gravel, but definitely the use would go down. But you still need to develop a distribution system to make it happen, in a in a transmission system, so.
Thank you, uh Mr. Milne.
Thank you, Mayor, just so we have clarification, I was also leaning towards option A, but I'm not against option B, but uh. I also see no uh value in option C at the moment, so probably come, when it comes to vote, I would be probably more likely to do option A, so just give me a heads up.
Thank you, Mr. Milne, Mr. Grim.
Real, real quick, courts, Mr. Mayor, um no, I just think it's important to point out here that, you know, that there was this um rate study. And connection fee analysis that was put on in twenty twenty-three that is provided in the report that is available to the public and everything. And these numbers weren't just pulled out of the sky somewhere, something like that, but it was based on this analysis, rates can then be calculated. To ensure utility revenues are sufficient to cover the cost of operating the utility in compliance with applicable laws and regulations. Law for payment of debt service obligations, well, as to meet the bond covenant requirements, this is a, this is a tough thing for us, this is a tough road for us to go down. But I think again, we are in a growing city and it you, at some point, you know, we have to figure out how to, how to pay for this stuff and. Be good stewards of it, because there is an expectation, people want the lower quality of life. But on the other hand, there's an expectation of the same amenities and services the other cities have, and that's the the quandary we're in and. Thus, our hand gets forced to move on stuff like this, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grim, Ms. Prowls.
Thank you, Mayor, um you know, we keep talking about growth pays for growth, um and and looking at this graph in particular. If we're really considering growth paying for growth, option B is probably the best route we have um to to make that happen. And in regards to zero escaping, this is not a new conversation, zero escaping has been talked about in several years back. Um it's, it's a concept that we've wanted to bring up, uh it's something that we've been talking about for several years. Um maybe now is the time to have a serious talk and bring it back and and figure out how to implement some of those. Concepts, ideas, and how to develop a policy uh potentially, but um for me, uh option B. Would is the most logical way for growth paying for growth, thank you.
Thank you, uh with that, does city staff have kind of a sense of where to go with this? Alright, with that, we'll move on to item uh or excuse me, number eleven, which is new business. Uh presentation, it's a potential changes to inspection services from uh Ms. Igdel.
Uh thank you, Mayor, and evening, council, um the topic uh in front of you today is very informal, we're looking for. Uh your input and your guidance for uh moving forward, uh while we were presenting on a a contract. Uh approval for Northwest Code Professional, this would be back in January, so a lot of, a lot of things have happened since then. Uh we had discussed some uh items that uh uh the building code, um the international building code does not require. For them to be inspected, but our code does, so we wanted to, we had some discussion on that, it um. It it was clear from a council discussion then and some individual discussions later that you would like to. Uh see this back and 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 have a discussion as a group, and next slide please. Um the first slide here, uh I apologize for small font, uh is all of the different inspections um that we do overall as a city. Next slide. So these are the uh items that we are uh interested in getting your input, uh which were included in, like I mentioned. Included in our code uh as items for inspection, permitting and inspection. Uh and are excluded in the international building code. Uh some key items are um any one-story detached accessory structures like sheds or playhouses. Uh anything less than two hundred square feet, uh if they're in residential area, and hundred and twenty square feet if they're. Uh for commercial or industrial use, um sidewalks and driveways above grade. Uh if they're not over basements or they're not in part of a route uh or within the public right of way. Uh retaining walls less than four feet and so on and so forth, um in some of our uh community listening sessions, we've heard about. Swimming pools and and things like that, so that's also in uh included in here, next slide please. There is some uh uh disadvantage to, I'm sorry, one more slide. Um there is some um advantage to uh moving forward with excluding them from our code. Um ma- majority being, or most of it being, that it's uh lessening the regulatory burden on people. Uh they're able to put in a shed in their home if they want to, they're not having to come in, um talk to the city, get a permit. Wait for the inspection, um it does encourage more um improvement of uh property. Uh there's also city resources that are utilized in that process. Uh and we could use that for a higher mission, not to say that these are not important things, which I'm gonna talk about in the drawbacks, but. Uh we could use that for permitting of larger developments and um commercial. Um and industrial uh permits, things like that, next slide please. There are challenges though, uh the major one being encroachment issues, so when we're not permitting, uh then. Many, many times, people do not know what our rules are, uh there's many times when I myself struggle with uh reading our code and. Understanding what the requirements are, so um it might be hard to know that there's an easement on your property and you might build. Something over it, uh and that creates a problem down the line, because maybe it's, it's a sewer line or a water line. There's a break and we need to be able to access it, and in that case, uh you're looking at tearing down something that somebody has built. So they would have to pay to tear it down, they would have to pay to build it back up somewhere else, uh which creates a considerable issue. Um down the line, and that, those are some very emotionally charged conversations that we need to have. Um so those are uh difficult discussions, uh this is at least within the perimeter, if somebody is building a shed. Um over um over an easement, um there's also issues with uh not permitting fences. People not, might not be aware of what exactly our codes are, what the line of sight issues are, so that becomes a public safety thing. And once they've been constructed, then our code enforcement would have to go in and break uh break the news that it needs to be. Uh torn down and rebuilt again, um so we would have larger. Um code enforcement uh challenge after and more resources needed for that area. Um but again, this is kind of the good and the bad here, uh we do expect most of our residents to know what our codes are. But again, um not very many do, next slide please. There is um, there is a solution, kind of a halfway as a compromise if council is interested in considering it. Which is just a plan review permit, uh which you would just be, you would require permitting, you would just review the. Plan review, but you would not review the actual construction itself, just so that you're letting people know that there's an easement there. Or that these are our fence codes, things like that, uh we're trying to think about what would be the mitigation, and this is the only route. So we wanted to put that in there uh for council to consider, next slide please. Um so overall, uh you, this is just what you would see in the ordinance, it's in our subsection um in our PMC right now. And we would just uh strike that down, uh if council's interested, or we would add new language in there for the plan review permit. And and move forward, and with that, I'm open for any questions that you might have.
Thank you, uh Mr. Prowls.
Thank you, Mayor, um yeah, I, you know, I, reading the packet, I I think the middle ground approach of doing a a plan review would be. Awesome, um how much is that gonna cost, is there a cost to that?
There is definitely cost to that, because you'd be, uh you would have to have a a planned reviewer. Taking a look at that and ensuring that it meets all of the requirements, that there's no easements, essentially the same thing that we do for permitting right now. Essentially the same thing that we do for permitting right now.
So it just depends on what exactly it is, or?
Uh, we do have a fees for that. I do not know exactly what that is, but we would continue on with that fee, probably. Uh, revise it to reduce it for inspection.
Okay, yeah, I, I wouldn't be against that. I, I, I think as long as the plan review um, process is simple. Low cost and fast, so it doesn't stop people from doing what they wanna do with their own properties and stuff. No, I, I think this is a good step forward to cleaning up our code and being more in line with the international building code. Um, so no, I, I'd be okay with the plan review. Uh, I would just like to know what those costs would be. Other than that. I would totally support a plan review component to this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Prowls, Mr. Grim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, Ms. Sigdahl, I just want to say thank you. This was kind of a huge ask of council. Uh, la- last year, and I know we asked a lot of staff last year, but thank you for bringing this back before us and. Also, you used probably my, the, the best phrase I heard all night tonight. Lessening the regulatory burden. I just love that. That just speaks to me at the deepest level. Um, I also appreciate that, you know, as you pointed out, people may be more likely to improve their property, which lifts us all up. But I, I want you to know, I hear you loud and clear too, of the potential um, problems that's, that could be created by this. Especially as it pertains to somebody spending a lot of money on maybe a brick fence and having to tear it down and. They're gonna come and be extremely upset that they have to uh, pay for that twice and so. Uh, I, I don't wanna tie up staff's time too much, but I am probably in a similar camp of uh, councilman paralysis that. You know, ma- maybe there is a uh, halfway point because I do like the idea of. The, the permits and the fees go, going down for this, but I realize at the same point, at the same time. It is staff time that is used for this, and of course, that, that is a service we have to pay for, and so. I always liked the idea of being providers of information rather than. In- enforcers, but I, again, I hear you loud and clear that though this may save some time and some issues upfront. Could create some very emotionally draining uh, issues that maybe one issue would. Be the equivalent of a hundred pre-inspections down the road, so yes. I see our legal representative also nodding in agreement, so. Yes, I, I, I would like to look at this further and hear what my fellow council members have to say, but definitely hear you loud and clear of your concerns too. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grim, Ms. Blais though.
Um, thank you. I just have, I guess, a little comment, um, and a question, so. Partially, I see commercial and industrial, and then the other side I see residential. So about four or five years ago at the hotel, I had a slope problem, and so we decided to do a retaining wall. Of course, I didn't go get a permit, um, cause I was naive. Um, so we just put up the per, uh, the rotating wall and I get, it's all completed. It looks really good. And I get cease and. Stop order work in bright pink or red paper, and I'm like, it's already done. There's nothing to stop. And so then I call because of course I'm frantic and mad at the same time, cause I'm like, what did I do wrong? And they're like, oh, well, you just didn't pay for the permit. It looks great, but you need to pay for the permit. So I ended up paying for the permit after the fact, um, which could have been a pretty hefty fine. So my question, I guess, and my comment is, is would this. For commercial and residential, are we strictly looking specific? Potential permit inspection eliminations for one or the other?
This would be for both.
Thank you.
Um, looks like no further comments, so I'll just make mine brief. Um, what I think maybe. The best split the baby approach would be to have an optional plan permit review whereby the individual can select to have it. I do think if we're gonna go that route, we need to make it very clear on the city's website. If you're doing X, Y, or Z. The city doesn't warrant that blank, you know, there's no encroachment, no easement. We recommend a planned permit review for you to ensure that your property, your project does not. Um, you know, whatever, like however we wanna couch that language, but I do think. Um, you know, kind of basically build at your own risk. We're letting you know there's a process whereby you can pay a nominal fee. And we'll hopefully it's somewhat expedited or a relatively seamless process. I think that's my biggest concern is adding, you know, extra burden, time, whatever. Um, but I do think making that optional, but again, caveatting it pretty hard, you know. Both on paper and internet, saying, hey, look, we're not gonna warrant this, and if someone comes out and inspects, do it at your own risk. Mr. Ferguson?
Yeah, the only thing I just wanna uh, kinda clarify is that when. When you have a situation where you have to do something, so for example, somebody built something and they block sightline, they. Uh, do something where it's, it's a safety, pu- pu- public health and safety issue, you're, you're gonna have to do something. It's a whole lot easier to be able to get a warrant for abatement if they won't even let us get on the property to actually get, you know, to have to take it down. Uh, it's a whole lot easier to go to court when they didn't, they didn't get a permit. So whether that means that they didn't get a permit, in other words, uh, uh, we can put together an affidavit and be able to, excuse me, we can put together an affidavit and. And get that in front of a judge and have a whole lot better uh, time by getting that process started than we can if we have to show. That somehow they were, yeah, we all know that, you know, ignorance is no excuse, but that's a separate step that we would have to take. So being able to say, get a, get a declaration from a staff member and and be able to prove that uh, they didn't actually go through the process and be able to get on the property if need be. That can be something that would be expedited and make that process go a little faster, but. So I would say, I mean, just from a legal perspective, the, the best alternative and my recommendation would be. To at least have some kind of a permit requirement with plan review. That way, uh, if you don't wanna go inspect it, that's, that, that's fine. I get that. That I don't think that's gonna change much. That's just preventing that what we currently have by being able to go out and inspect the property is we prevent these problems from ever happening. So if that's a bridge too far, no pun intended, uh, you, you really want to uh, uh, at least. Uh, the recommendation I would make is to, to have a, some kind of permitting process where uh, they have to get a, a permit in advance. But that's just my two cents on it.
I appreciate that, um. I mean, we're not taking action, so I'll chew on that and give my thoughts to staff. Mr. Grim?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I love your approach, Mr. Mayor. I, I like that where, you know, you can, you can go through the permitting process. And of course, I'd want the legal to weigh in on this, and like you said, chew it some more, but if somebody wants to pay, go through, make sure they're right. Because maybe they're naive like me or something and just wanna make sure it's right, or the build at your own risk. I, I think that's just a, a great option. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grim. With that, it looks like it closes us out of item number eleven and moves us on to item number twelve, which is miscellaneous discussion. Presumably, this is interim city manager Zabel giving us an update on the city manager search.
Actually, I had a, a couple of things, uh, if you indulge, I wanted to report uh, that we did have a promotion ceremony at. Fire station uh, eighty-four today, and so, uh, happy to announce Captain Patrick. Uh, Taylor and Lieutenant Brandon Wardman, so that was kinda fun to be able to go to that. And thank you, Chief, for the invite. Okay, so I talked a little bit about, um, and for the benefit of the audience, uh, might be watching on TV. Uh, as councils were recently appointed me as city manager, this is to discuss. Uh, the process by which council would select the firm to assist city in selecting ultimately a permanent replacement, so. Once engaged, to give you a little bit of background on, on kinda how this works, once engaged, a search firm, uh, you know. Of this nature will typically take probably about four months to go through the process. To put, to the point where council is ready to make a selection. You got a little negotiation period after that. And then you have whatever time that uh, selected candidate may need to relocate potentially. Or give notice at a, at their previous uh, position before they can start, so that, that part's about maybe five. Five and a half months depending on, on what um, what transpires, what the circumstances might be. So council has a lot of discretion on how they proceed in engaging a firm for this purpose and uh. The process can go quickly or it can have a timeline of its own, and I, I've kinda seen that happen. And it, and a lot of it has to do with, and I, I'll give you just my own re- personal experience recently as a interim. I had a council that took a long time to kinda get the ball rolling on a search, but really. So I, I absolutely appreciate the council's diligence on wanting to have this discussion and, and get this thing going, but. The firms themselves can vary in experience and uh, and their capabilities, uh, you know, a measure is the uh. Familiarity not only with the community in the local region, which are helpful, but also the. Kind of that area on which your likely bulk of your candidates are gonna come from, because you can make an assessment of. How they may match up with the community that they're doing the search for, you know, what is. Is, is Boise or, or one of the big suburbs around Boise, anything like Pasco, right? Or is it, or is it completely different? Um, a pulse on the profession, the practitioners. Not, not only, you know, who's looking, there, that's, there's a lot, a lot of people out there and you do searches like this. You kinda learn who's looking, but a trick is knowing who's looking that maybe doesn't know who, they're ready to move on to the next thing and. Sometimes they're gonna be some of the best candidates. And uh, also an inventory of searches, if you got a firm that has a lot of similar searches going right now, they're gonna have a. Pretty big pool of candidates to, to take a look at. And be able to, to encourage and, and bring to you for uh, uh, consideration through your, your own application process. And then, of course, finally, who the team is, what kind of experience is the actual team that's gonna help the city have? And so those are some of the criteria probably by which you'd wanna take a look. I mean, everybody kinda gets quickly to price, but. You know, if, if one firm's a few thousand dollars more than the other and they have what it takes to make it happen, if you had a timely manner and get you a good product, then. Uh, you gotta consider that, so to get the process started, we need a little bit of direction from council on how they wish to. Uh, move forward in engaging a search firm. I don't, I don't really have a recommendation for you necessarily. I mean, a lot, a lot of times you, you may just have some ideas in mind, other times, uh, you'll take, uh. Go through a process, which again, that has a life cycle of its own, of uh, requesting proposals. You may trust staff just to ask for a couple of proposals for you to consider at one of your uh, next meeting or two. To uh, to take a look at and, and uh, maybe even get presentations from the, those firms. If we, if we were to do an RFP, you might get ten, you know, take you three or four weeks to get it out there, advertise it, and then. You might get ten and that's really gonna block your time, take a lot of your time to kinda walk through this, so it's, like I say, you have a lot of. Discretion on how you wanna go forward in a search like this.
Alright, looks like I'll start with Mr. Grim, then Mr. Prowls, and if we can, let's keep it tight.
Yeah, th- thank you, Mr. Mayor. No, I, I just wanted to just respond to Mr. Zabel's comment that at least I would have confidence in. You know, I think like you said, we, we muddy this too much and, you know, we're gonna bog it down. There's a balance between. Wanting to expedite it so much that we don't turn over all the rocks, but I, I think just the way you've spoken tonight, you're on the right course. And that's where I wanna go, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grim, Mr. Prowls.
Thank you, Mayor. I was just gonna, uh, I mean, defer to our, our elders of the council. I mean, it's not like. We, we just did this kinda currently in the last like two years, so get the list of consultants that they used. Last go around that they, they had to choose from and we'll just kinda go through it and, and again, I don't, I don't think this is uh, that hard to choose, I mean. As far as I know, there's only a couple that I've seen the city use, and I guess we'll just kinda go from there, but um. Yeah, and we'll just kinda see what the qualifications are based on those firms, but, you know, I just wanna see who we can use and let's make a decision, so, thank you.
So I think that, uh, let me, one follow-up, then I'll go to you, Mr. Harpster. I- if we took kinda the approach Mr. Prowls suggested, it sounds like not going for an RFP, but kind of grabbing a couple. Is that gonna have any solicitation issues where we somehow haven't properly solicited if we just. Grab a handful, do we need to, do we need to go out for bid, I guess, is the question on this?
No.
Okay.
You can, yes, it's a, uh, personal services agreement. You don't, you don't need to RFP it.
Okay, just wanted to make sure that if, if we kind of shortcut it, but still get a swath, we're not under some obligation, Mr. Harpster.
Yeah, my uh, I follow GMP consultants on LinkedIn and I see all the searches that they do and. Um, I don't think there's another firm that's even probably close to the amount that they do, and so to Mr. Zabel's point, I would think they would have. Um, perhaps the biggest pool. To Mr. Prowls' point, I am open to at least getting a, a couple proposals from. At least two firms, so we have something to compare to instead of just saying, well, this firm has done good in the past, let's just use them. I think it would be wise to at least compare them to one other, uh, to at least make an important decision to go from there. Um, and um, to piggyback off Mr. Zabel said, I, I certainly am not interested in spending weeks compiling the list of, you know, ten different firms and. Getting us into late April before we even select one and start a search, so. Um, I think it may be uh, most beneficial to pick two or three, uh, over the next couple of weeks, do a review of, of them and, and pick one and uh. Start getting busy.
Thank you, Mr. Zabel.
Oh, we, was that, uh, sorry?
Sorry, Ms., sorry, I thought you were gonna respond to Mr. Harpster, so Ms. Blais though.
I would just like to see probably three, because I think two is not enough. Three would give us a more clearer. I guess, decision-making. I just don't think two is quite enough.
I think I'm good with that, maybe three and seven eights. I'm just, I'm just kidding. I think, I think a few would be fine, um, and, and if we can ask them to expedite their responses, I understand they have other. Customers are already servicing, uh, but if we could get something in the next two to three weeks, then we can make the decision. Execute the contract and get underway and give your life back at some point.
Great, thank you.
Although we do appreciate what you're doing, to be clear there.
I'm enjoying being here, but yeah, I, I wanna go home too.
Understood. I'm sure Debbie's watching this saying, I hope he stays. I'm kidding. I saw her this weekend. She was very happy that you were both busy, but she misses you. That was clear. Uh, with that, do we have anything further from council? Seeing none, we're gonna move on to item number thirteen, which is executive session. That is listed for twenty-five minutes. Is that the right time this week? Okay, just wanted to confirm, yep, yep, I, I've got at least a quorum almost asking for a restroom break, so. It's uh, by the time I finish, we're gonna call eight forty-eight, we're gonna start executive session, or let's, let's do it at eight, eight fifty-two. We do need executive session, discussion with legal counsel about current or potential litigation under revised code of Washington forty-two point three zero point one one zero. Subsection one, Roman numeral uh, I or one, twenty-five minutes, we're gonna, uh, eight forty-seven, five-minute break is gonna roll us into nine oh two. Nine twenty-seven, we should be back out. Thank you. Sorry, did I get my times? Eight fifty-two, twenty-five minutes, nine seventeen. So my math has never been strong, that's why I'm a lawyer, so, see you nine seventeen.
It is 9:17 and we are out of executive session. This meeting adjourned. Thank you.
(Music)